We're going to start with the public hearing in a moment. Okay, everybody, it's 5:58 PM. I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could please remain standing for a moment of silence for Corrections Officer Nancy Connell, who passed away unexpectedly last week. Thank you. Okay. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hoss?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Liscavich?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the Luzerne County Personnel Code regarding residency requirements for division heads and certain management positions. Mr. Raybo? Can you turn the mic on? Sorry, Mr. Raybo.
Could you say your name again? I don't remember.
Yes, yeah. In case you forgot, Mark Raybo of Hazelton. I have a question on the proposed ordinance. I don't have an issue with getting qualified applicants outside the Luzerne County lines if they're preeminently qualified and are able to, you know, make, be able to do the duties and be able to show up for the, for their, for their, you know, for their daily requirements. But I do have a question with regards to relocation, or if they're going to stay in their, where they're residing outside the county lines. Are they going to be compensated for commute if it's above a certain, or beyond a certain distance? Because in some cases, I know in some counties, they do that, you know, that they would make the accommodation for, you know, prolonged travel, if you will. So that's my question.
Do you have any other, any other comments?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Raybo, okay. Manager Crocamo, you want to respond?
No, that, that, that is absolutely not going to happen.
Right. All right, thank you. Any other public comment on the ordinance? All right, I do have one email here that we received. It is from Robin and Walter Kochan. It says, Dear Luzerne County Council, we do not support amending the Personnel Code with regards to the mandated unspecified Luzerne County management positions by discontinuing the residency requirement after the employee has attained five years of continued employment with the county. We understand your reasoning is based on the difficulty in getting new hires. However, our position is that once a new hire has been here for five years, they will be established and hopefully have fallen in love with the community and not desire to move outside the county boundaries. Eliminating this residency requirement eliminates an employee having a stake in the game of the health of our government and county. This is akin to a number of out-of-town landlords who are purchasing properties here. Not only are they making housing unaffordable for residents, they also do not care about the quality of communities seeking only profit. We hope you will take this point into consideration and thank you in advance for doing so. All right, any other comments? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. We'll move right into the voting session at 6:02 PM. I'd like to call the voting session to order. We've already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hoss?
Here.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Liscavich?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Present.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
All present?
Thank you. Attorney Skeen, would you man, would you mind announcing the executive session, please?
Certainly. We had an executive session wherein we discussed personnel matters and contract matters for specification before the meeting today.
All right, thank you very much. Prior to council getting started today, I would just like to make an announcement, and I think Manager Crocamo will have a few things to say about it as well. So I know that we will be having a discussion regarding the Fireman's Memorial Bridge in Pittston City later in the work session. And I'm happy to announce as well that the county selection committee has, in fact, selected a building designer or engineer for the Nanicoke-West Nanicoke Bridge. It's going to be Majeski and Masters, otherwise known as M&amp;M. Can't say M&amp;M too many times in front of Mr. Thornton, though, because he'll get hungry. But I did just want to go through a couple of points, just to make sure that the public is aware of the process that we went through in order to, in order to select them. So Luzerne County did follow PennDOT's guidance on selecting the consultant for the bridge. And as previously was stated at council meetings, the county staff was given the opportunity to review all the proposals and recommended a short list of three different candidates. The three shortlisted firms were presented to the council selection committee on June 26th. That same evening, council members did sit down and meet to discuss the individuals. We did a brief ranking. We discussed their pros and cons, and we had to answer several questions that were given to us by PennDOT that had to be answered a certain way. District Four staff continued to provide guidance and input with the required information that had to go into the ECMS, which is why there was a couple-week delay between this interview session and us actually selecting the, the individuals. PennDOT Central Office, they officially approved the consultant ranking by the council selection committee, and like I said, it was Majeski and Masters. And upon publication of the results in ECMS, M&amp;M actually has already reached out to the county for a meeting with the county staff and PennDOT. And Manager Crocamo, if there's anything else you'd like to add on that?
Thank you, Chairman Lombardo. I want to emphasize that it's of great importance of the work, ongoing work on the Nanicoke Bridge. The project is one of the top priorities for all of us. And I'm pleased to announce that we're moving forward on that in actually a rather timely manner, while ensuring that we're doing it right. The firm that was selected by council, I'm confident will do an extraordinary job in this project. Your patience and your support during this process, it's a rather tedious process, it's greatly appreciated. We are working to enhance the community's infrastructure. It's one of the priorities that I have as the county manager, and I know that county council members share that vision. We have a lot of work to do, but we are up to the challenge. And with county council support and PennDOT, we're making strides towards a safer and more efficient and economic beneficial future for all of us. I'm very excited. It's going to be a very exciting journey, and I already have a call scheduled with the project manager tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for entertaining us for that for a moment. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda?
One deletion, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I propose deleting Agenda Item Number Five, the motion to adopt resolution approving the employment agreement offer letter for the manager because it violates the Charter Section 4.05 removal. Charter states the county manager shall serve at the pleasure of county council. County council may suspend the county manager pending his/her removal by the resolution adopted by affirmative vote, at least seven, at least majority, plus one of its current members, and on and on and on. What this does, this handicaps future councils from taking such action, and it gives a golden parachute if that's the case. And that is not fair to the taxpayers at all. And this has no stand on the current manager. I support her 110%. She's doing a great job. But that is not the point here. If you vote for this, you are voting against the charter. It's a violation.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
All right, roll call?
Would they comment on that?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With all due respect, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Hoss's comment.
This is just to remove it.
Oh, to remove it?
Yeah, Mr. Thornton, I'm, so I think if we're going to have an extended discussion on it, we'll have to keep it on the agenda.
I'll reserve my comments for later.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Mr. Hoss?
Yes, to remove.
Ms. Krishnowski?
No.
Mr. Liscavich?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No. We'll keep it on the agenda.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, and spin too quick.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
You have two yes and nine no.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other deletions from the voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, one, one, one no? Okay, two no's. All right. Okay, the agenda's adopted. Is there public comment on voting session agenda items? I have two slips up here. I have, I have Mr. Zola, but it's, it's for the public hearing, it says. Mr. Zola, yeah, I think he's outside. How you doing, Mr. Zola? Is this, is this on an agenda? Okay, can we, we'll have you speak at the end of this voting session, if that's okay. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Raybo? Can you just?
All right, can you hear me now? Okay.
Yes.
Item number five and six. With regards to item number five, I was here in 2018, the last time this was, this, an ironclad contract to give perks and increased salary to the then-county manager, David Pedry. I disagreed with it then, I disagree with it now. As per what Mr. Hoss said about the charter, I agree with that. But I also agree with the fact, and I said this in 2018, and I cited at that time state law that says that a council cannot extend a contract beyond its current term into a new term of a new council. That is state Supreme Court case law ruling, and Mr. Skeen, I'll be happy to send you the case, Supreme Court case. So I hope that this council takes caution to maybe amend the current term of the agreement so that way it does not extend into a new council, that it binds the hands of the new council coming in. And I could have you read the part where it says, "Traditionally, a new elected governing body is empowered to act on behalf of the public without being constrained by the contracts of its predecessor that would significantly weaken the new governing bodies making use of its policymaking powers. Thus, historically, when a municipal governing body, in the performance of its government functions, enters into a contract, there has..."
"...there has been a limit on the time that the municipality is bound by that contract so that no one, municipal governing body, does not win or curtail the policymaking authority of a subsequently elected government body." I'm not reading this to you by my own words. This is from the state local government commission that oversees all elected municipal governing bodies. So...
Yep. You know, it, is that all you, we'll give you 30 more seconds, Mr. Raybo, if you'd like. If you just... Oh, just hold, hold on until he, until he gets, otherwise the public that are on the Zoom will not be able to hear you. I apologize. If you want to continue speaking, you should be able to, yeah.
Number six, on the money that is being taken out, the debt, is that because of the state hindering the, the state services, or the services provided by the county that's funded by the state? If that's the case, then that's the same as what happened in 2015. And I'm sure Mr. Hoss still has occurring nightmares about that because of the borrowing, and that caused the, the downgrade of the credit rating. I think Mr. Perry just started council at that time when that happened, so that was a very contentious time. So I hope that the state passes the budget, and if they don't pass the budget, then, Mr. Chair, I hope that you and the manager can force the state to pay for any penalties that would incur to the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments on agenda items only? Mr. Griffith?
Good evening, council. Let me see if this is, yeah, it's on, okay. I'm addressing council regarding the agenda item for the employment contract to the county manager. Please understand that I'm in full support of our county manager, and as the county controller, has worked with her since her hiring in May of 2023. She's extremely worthy of a salary increase and has been provided raises in the past without a contract. There are several examples of our county manager doing great things for the people of Luzerne County, to reduce expenses from a revised time and attendance system that saved taxpayers over $100,000 a year, to something as recent as what's on today's agenda, to refinance a bond and save the taxpayers $2 million in debt payments. This contract is a four-year term which will increase the budget by 12% over four years. The salary increase for 2026 of 3.5% is excessive and should be postponed or tabled until the 2026 budget is released by the county manager on October 15th. And in addition, there are two members of the council that will not be on county council in 2026, yet will be voting and responsible to possibly award a contract that will increase the salary of the county manager and have no accountability to the public for their vote. The agenda item also is not complete for the public to understand all the conditions of the contract, as there is an extension of employment offer letter that is not attached to the agenda, and therefore there is no transparency regarding the cost and benefits provided in the contract. The proposed contract incentives and bonuses should be placed on a council work session agenda, as they are not considered a personnel matter, and therefore should be not a contracted item. Bonus incentives and salary increases should be provided if there's a budget submitted in 2026 that does not provide an increase greater than 2% of property taxes and every year thereafter. That would be a great incentive and a great use of a contract for a county manager. The Home Rule Charter created in 2009 did not provide or anticipate a county manager be given a contract for four years, or it would have made the executive branch county manager an elected position by the people. Instead, the people wanted the county manager to be held accountable by our elected county council members, and the ability to remove that provision by awarding a contract to the county manager for four years is not the intent or the spirit of our Home Rule Charter. The Home Rule Charter provides the county council to award a salary increase for the county manager based on their performance, as well as provisions for removal. For lack of performance and the ability of county council to provide a contract simply undermines these provisions and provide a mechanism to protect the county manager by placing excessive financial deterrence for future county councils to stifle these positions, these provisions. In closing, as county council, county controller, have seen the lack of retention in the workplace as well as the loss of institutional knowledge that is created because of salaries not being sufficient for employees of our county workforce. We have employees that are here for over 25 years and their salaries are less than $45,000 per year. The county controller strongly recommends a resounding no vote on this agenda item until after October 15th, when the budget is presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Schnee?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Robert Schnee Sugarloaf. As a former member that served here six years, there were two outstanding managers, I think, during my tenure, was Miss, Mr. Pedry and Ramilda Crocamo over that time period. And why I'm saying that, people would say, "Why are you saying that?" Well, I want to inform you where we were. I mean, we were almost $500 million in the hole before this form of government was implemented. So that's not only like the managers for, I thank them for their leadership, council members that are here and that served in the past, that brought that down to $130 million. You brought up about the credit rating. I'm glad you brought that up. If you remember, we had no credit rating.
Can you just address your, address your comments through the chair? I apologize.
All right, I'm sorry about that. But we had no credit rating. We have an excellent credit, credit rating now. This building itself was in shambles. This is the jewel of the county. If you remember, the net was over that rotunda for how many years? That was all fixed. Windows replaced, the heating system. This is just a couple. Hanover Industrial Park wasn't there. Everybody boomed. We got jobs. Business flourished in that area. I mean, so we've come a long way from where we were. And Ramilda was turned down, and, and I'm very proud. Both of them were from Luzerne County. We didn't have to go out of state. We, we tried that twice, and it failed. We tried that. We have tremendous talent here in Luzerne County for any position. Any position, we have tremendous talent. But she was turned away. You know, you know when you pick up a person? She didn't like walk away. She didn't walk away. Her love and compassion for the county brought her back. That's what it's about. That's why she came back. She has her name out there, Crocamo. You go out every day and you give people 100% when you're in a position like that, just as elected council members. People are putting their trust in you. There's not a better high in the world than people putting their trust in you as an elected official, or as Ramilda as the county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Schnee.
And I, I think everybody out there, plus the manager, have done an outstanding job. The people that have served previously, an outstanding job.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Agenda items only? Anybody on the Zoom? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 2025 voting session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the agenda. Number one, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Mountain Top Area Little League.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number two, motion to adopt a resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Wyoming Valley Airport.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving the allocation of opioid settlement proceeds to Endless Mountains Extended Care LLC. Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss? Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving the allocation of opioid settlement proceeds to Restorative Roots WB LLC. Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving employment agreement offer letter for county manager Ramilda P. Crocamo Esquire.
Second.
Motion and a second. On the question, I just have one or two remarks that I'd like to make, and I mean this with all due respect to the speakers that came up, Mr. Hoss, Mr. Griffith. I am honestly sick and tired of hearing people tell us that the charter says things that it does not say. I'm sick and tired of people looking at documents and telling us that they say things that they do not say. This employment agreement with Manager Crocamo, who has been a fantastic manager, who has been somebody that I personally can count on every day to wake up and be in love with Luzerne County, this document does not preclude a future council, or this council, from removing her as manager at our will. She does serve at the pleasure of Luzerne County Council, but more importantly, she serves at the pleasure of Luzerne County. And for her, I think it is a pleasure that she serves Luzerne County, and it's shown in every single day that she's worked here. And she deserved this contract on day one. And I am proud. I will be proud to vote yes tonight, and I'll be proud to support her every single day that I'm here. And if this is one of the last votes that I make as a member of Luzerne County Council, so be it. That's fine, because I know that this county will be in good shape and in good hands with Ramilda Crocamo. Any other comments? Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to echo some of what you said. I think it's important, it needs to be said, because many people are not familiar with all of the things that are happening in the county. You can't possibly be familiar with, as county council is. So we are intimately familiar with the job that Ms. Crocamo's been doing as, as a county manager. I just want to mention that she has moved this county forward in a very quick manner, very positively and quickly. She is the one who spearheaded a 0% tax increase in this county for the past two years. She is the one, before any of council discussed any budgets whatsoever, she went to her division heads and demanded, mandated that they give their budgets to her and to council with a 0% tax increase. That needs to be said. She is out there looking for, out for the taxpayers of this county. Why? Because she's lived here all her life. She has a stake in the game. She, I watched her reshuffle department heads and division heads yearly, saving hundreds of thousands of dollars for the taxpayers. These are things that people don't see behind the scenes. These are things that people don't see behind the scenes. Respectfully disagree with Mr. Haas. She does not handcuff future council bodies. As the provisions in this contract or agreement do provide terms for future councils to separate service if they so desire. I do want to mention in 2018, council voted to extend the contract to the then Sining County manager, which did extend into future council members not yet elected. That happened seven years ago. Now, I do agree with County Controller Griffith with his one comment he made tonight at the podium, where he said, "We have good employees leaving this county all the time because they're underpaid, and we lose good employees." He just made the best case for extending this contract to Ramilda Crocamo, and here's why. She has worked for more than two years in this role, and we have not given her a raise yet. As a matter of fact, she has worked for more than two years at this job at less salary than the previous county manager, who was here for five months, disaster in his wake. She has not yet, has worked up to that salary yet. So for those reasons, I strongly support her continued leadership here in the county. I could go on with 20 other things. I'm not going to mention them, but those are important items that everybody needs to consider. And I would hate like heck for her to just get up and leave someday because she's not getting the raises that she should be getting. She's underpaid, as far as I'm concerned, as compared to the previous manager. And by the way, in 2018, we extended that contract. We gave a 6% increase at that time to the Sining County manager. I think it was a 7-3 vote that went through at that time. We're not considering anywhere near 6% here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lescavage?
So like my two fellow council people, I can probably go on for a few hours with great words to say about Ramilda. And until you sat here and dealt with the county manager, who, in my opinion, was way in over his head, and probably would have bankrupted this county had he been here for two more years. It was, this county was going to be a complete disaster under Randy Robertson. When you Google him, look up the fact that there was a guy that came out of a, I think it was a city, I think it was in Kentucky, and he went through a five-year budget in one year. Does that sound like somebody that you want running this county? I highly doubt it. So I'm not going to sit here and just bore you with the details, but what it tell you is, there's not a time that happens where you pick up the phone, call her, ask her questions, email her, text her. She's Johnny on the spot to respond to you individually or as a whole. Somebody like that, who does a fantastic job, deserves this today. And I will definitely be voting yes, and I'm proud to also call you a great friend.
Mr. Haas?
Gentlemen, I appreciate what you said, and appreciate what the gentleman from Sugarloaf said. We've got to understand that this violates the charter. Another citizen just said it violates a Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruling, which essentially violates the state constitution. And it's emotionalizing what should be very grounded in fact. We will have six new members of council being seated on January 1st. This contract is a four-year contract that starts on January 1st, 2026. It's the fifth paragraph. We're talking past each other. Nobody disputes that Ramilda is doing incredible job. I value her very much. This is not an emotional argument. This violates the charter, and we've got to stop doing this. The public out there is very upset. You guys at our campaign, you hear this from people. Maybe they're not being very forthcoming to you, but they tell me. We've got to stop not doing the right thing. That contract in 2018, the 6% increase, I didn't support that when I was sitting on council that time. That was terrible as well for the same reason. Had no reflection on the manager, on the leadership qualities, on the background, on the acumen, nothing like that. But it violates what we are directed to follow here as county councilmen. How can we not see this? It's very plain as day. Who drove that argument was the chairman at the time, who now sits on the study commission, can't take a vote, abstains. It's wrong. Members, I just tell you, look at what's plainly written here. You're making people upset. We must follow the charter. Take the emotion out of it. We're all adults here. Please. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you very much. I agree that it violates the very language of the charter in that it allows the manager to serve at the pleasure of the council. Yes, you are correct. This contract does not stop future council members from replacing the manager, but it does provide for a substantial deterrent and a substantial amount of severance. That severance is a threat or result that looms over the next council should they choose to terminate or try to find a new manager. That's the problem with this contract. People have also argued precedent here, but to argue precedent is a poor argument because it does not account for prior precedent being a mistake. Frankly, I don't believe that Randy Robertson ever should have been paid that much, and I don't necessarily believe that Dave Pedry should have been given a contract. I wasn't here then, but that doesn't mean that the precedent wasn't mistaken. And I agree with Councilman Haas. This is certainly not about Ramilda, who I have known as a good county worker since she was Judge Gartley's law clerk. She's known me forever. I've known her forever. I remember when she was appointed first assistant, chief solicitor. I went into Dave Pedry's office and I told him, "Great hire, great hire." I went into her office and I told her how proud I was of her and how great I thought that hire was. I wonder if she remembers this sometimes. I don't know if you do, but I do. I do. I've known her forever as a good county worker. But it's not about emotional memories. It's not about what has happened in the past. It's about what the charter says and what I now have since found in the PA State Supreme Court case law. It's violative of the charter. It's violative of the PA State Supreme Court law. And while that may be unfortunate, it doesn't change that it's factual. Thank you.
Any other members of council have comments? Okay. Ms. McDermott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if that can come over anymore. Ramilda, you really are a pleasure to work for, work with. And the contract, I want to reiterate what Joanna said. This contract doesn't stop council from removing the manager, but it does cost us a lot of money if we do that. And that falls on the taxpayers. That's my biggest thing. I just don't believe that we should have a contract. I disagree with that. Imagine if we had a contract with Randy Robertson. You talk about that. I'm very sorry I voted for him. It was a big mistake. But if we had a contract with him, that would have been a big problem. And I know you work very hard, and you do a very good job, and you do deserve the pay. I just don't agree with a contract.
Any other council members?
John?
Go ahead. Ms. Stevenson, and then Mr. Thornton. I want everyone to be able to have a chance to go.
So since we are still dealing with discrepancies in the contrast, can we bring it back to executive section? Not today, or can we table the vote for today, if that's the case, and reestablish the rhetoric in the contract to make it work and not violate the charter and state laws?
You could do either or. Are you making a motion?
I am making the motion.
Okay.
To table this vote today.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's, all right. Mr. Thornton, on the question to table? Nope. There's no question on table. Sorry.
Right. I mean, I don't have the relationship that Mr. Lescavage, Mr. Thornton, Chair Lombardo, with Ramilda that you all do, but I've watched Ramilda do remarkable work. When I call Ramilda, she answers the phone. We sit and we discuss and we address our issues, and it is an amazing process. This is not about Ramilda whatsoever. You are doing an extraordinary great job at your job. But if that is the case, and we are challenging the rhetoric of this contract, then let's sit and find rhetoric that makes it work and not potentially violate our rule of law.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Willowich?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
We have four yes, and eight no. It does not.
Okay. Seven, no.
Seven.
I mean, does the last comment, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Haas, and then Mr. Thornton.
Again, I don't know who actually originated this. I don't know where this idea came from, but this should have been done at budget time. This is a budgetary issue. We're doing this right in the middle of the summertime. I just don't understand it. And really, guys, you've really got to reevaluate what you're doing here. Sets a bad precedent that's already had a bad precedent set five years ago, six, seven years ago.
Mr. Thornton?
I yield back.
Okay. All right. Oh, yeah, let me, I'd like to add one other thing. I know that there's discussion about the potential cost of what it would be to remove the county manager during the term of this contract. And yes, that is a term in the contract, but there's a far greater cost of her leaving. There's a far greater cost of removing a county manager that's doing a fantastic job. And it's number one, finding somebody that will do a worse job. And number two, going through that entire process, having it all done in the public, which we've had to do twice. Members of the council have had to do that two times in a row, and I do not wish that on a single soul in this room to have to do that ever again, because it was a disaster. And having Randy Robertson as a manager was a disaster. And I understand, I'm trying to say this without having an emotional argument about it, but just looking at it logically, I'd like to make sure that our employees want to stay here. I'd like to make sure that our good employees want to stay here. And manager Crocamo is certainly one of those employees. I don't want her to think that council, any council, is taking her for granted. And I don't think that this ties the hands of any council. It certainly doesn't. Council's free to make any decision that they want. And I don't know that I agree with the remarks about the state Supreme Court cases. Those, to me, don't make sense because I don't know if we're using them in the correct context because the work of the county has to go on, no matter what we're doing. So I'm not quite sure if they're being read correctly, and I'm not sure if Attorney Skeen can comment on that. But at the end of the day, there is a far greater go through that process again, and losing institutional knowledge, and creating that vacuum of power, not vacuum of power, but that vacuum with a lack of knowledge that will be created when a manager leaves here. And when that happened in 2022, when Mr. Robertson arrived in 2022, it set this county back, not just years, but millions of dollars. And I'm not going to make that mistake again. Call the question? Oh, okay. Question's been called. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
I won't do something that I perceive is breaking the charter, so no.
Ms. Stevenson?
No, I will not proceed and feel as if I'm violating the charter that I took an oath for. But Ramilda, I will absolutely continue to support you in the best of my capacity, and I appreciate the work that you do.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, I would never proceed with violating the charter, and since the Office of Law has studied this question extensively and has not said it's violating the charter, I trust our Office of Law. I vote yes.
Mr. Willowich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Forward to seven, it passes.
Thank you. Number six.
Chairman, may I have a minute?
Absolutely.
Today was a very difficult day. I went with members of the administration and children and youth to the services for Jacob, who was tragically taken from us. And it makes, it seem that everything else really doesn't compare. It was one of the most difficult moments and one of the proudest moments that I had been with the staff, children, youth, and 911. I want to thank all of you who support and believe and trust in me. It's an honor to continue contributing to our commitment, our collective commitment to advancing Luzerne County. Working alongside our staff, many of whom are sitting at the end of the room, is a privilege, and it's their efforts that are vital to our success. I recognize, as with any human endeavor, I make mistakes. However, I want each and every one of you to know, I want you to be assured that my decisions and recommendations always will have the best interest and always have had the best interest of Luzerne County, not my own personal benefit. And only together, whether you voted for the contract or not, but only together, will remain the gem of northeastern Pennsylvania. I want to thank all of you, and I'm deeply touched.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your love of Luzerne County. Number six, introduction of the ordinance discussing, discussion regarding the ordinance authorizing the incurrence of non-electoral debt for the county of Luzerne by the issuance of general obligations refunding bonds, Series 2025, and/or general obligation refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $66,030,000, which together with certain available amounts, the county will be used for the purpose of financing a refunding program, payment of swap termination payments in connection with the refunding of the refunded 2015A bonds herein after defined, and paying the cost of issuing bonds, authorizing the preparation and filling of debt, statement of other documents, covenanting to create a sinking fund in the budget appropriate, and paid debt service on the bonds, and pledging the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the county for the bonds, setting forth substantial form of the bond, setting forth parameters for the maximum principal maturity amounts and dates, and maximum interest rates, and other details of the bonds, authorizing the execution of a continuing disclosure agreement, finding that a private negotiated sale is the best financial interest of the county, setting forth parameters for acceptance of a proposal for the purchase of the bonds, appointing a paying agent, and sinking fund depository, and authorizing other necessary actions.
So moved.
So moved.
It's automatically introduced, so.
I'm introducing what he said.
Thank you. You don't want to repeat that?
No, in one breath. He didn't even take a breath.
Thank you. Okay. Number seven, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the Luzerne County Personnel Code regarding residency requirements for division heads in certain management positions.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make an amendment.
Sure.
In the very last whereas, could we delete the section that states, quote, "After the employee has attained five years of continued employment with the county"? So again, the rationale, we've talked about this for many meetings at this point. So let's make the law clean. We debated this several years ago. It was a 6-5 split vote. It was contentious. And again, I see both sides. The reason is that people want our high-level employees to be taxpayers to Luzerne County. That makes a lot of sense to me. However, at the same time, we had to say goodbye to a couple of high-level employees who live just over the county line. And I think we still have some similar situations today. If you talk to management, some of these positions, we have a very slim pool of applicants in some cases. And I think our people, we're around Luzerne County tonight, our people can compete with anybody else nationwide. County tonight, our people can compete with anybody else nationwide. I don't think we have anything to fear. This certainly doesn't undermine any of our own people from applying for a job. What this does, by removing this, it does, um, give a black eye to the political class, because we know the political class really certainly has, uh, inordinate amount of power compared to the average person or the average applicant. So I'm making this submission, uh, again, with the pleasure of council, because I think it satisfies a lot of those requirements. We want the best for Luzerne County. If that means going to Beaver Meadows, or if it means going to Beaumont, or if it means going to Old Forge, so be it, even though it's just over the line.
So is you, I just, just to clarify what your motion is, it's to eliminate the words after the word requirement?
Correct.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. Uh, roll call on the amendment?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Sounds reasonable.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
I don't mean to be the lone naysayer here, but I'm voting no.
I think
Okay.
Are we done with that?
There's a, yeah, there, it's a, what is it, 10-1?
10-1.
Okay.
I think we also need to make a motion then to, um, remove it from the last whereas. Then did we not remove it from the last, I thought we removed it from the last paragraph. It needs to be removed in two places.
Oh, okay.
That's the point.
Yep.
Yeah, it needs to be removed in two, too.
Okay. Is there, okay, you want to make that amendment then, Ms. Smith?
So can I make the motion to remove it from the last paragraph?
After the word requirement?
After the word requirement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All right, just on the question, I just want to state my opinion, why I voted no, because I didn't, I obviously didn't have a chance to say it before. Um, I went a little too fast. Um, I, I do agree with the idea of having an employee be here and, and being, um, someone that's dedicated to the county for a period of time. I understand that that might, um, that might preclude some people from applying. Um, and while I, I certainly agree with those arguments, I just personally, um, would like to see somebody that has some dedication to Luzerne County if they don't live here. That's why I voted no. Everyone else is obviously free to vote yes, but that's just my personal opinion. Any other questions? All right, motion and a second. Roll call on the second amendment.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
The first one passed, so I'll vote yes on this one. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. Is everyone okay with their motion and a second to go for roll call? All right, we'll have a roll call on number seven, please.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I agree that having people invested in the county work here is an excellent idea, and certainly it's something that HR could take into consideration when hiring where you live is not a protected class, it wouldn't be discriminatory. Um, I do think that this will help with the nepotism problem that we see and the consolidation of power that we've seen for years in this county. So I'm happy to vote yes on this.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. I have two slips up here. First, I have Mr. Zola.
Hello, hello, again. John Zola, Sugarloaf. So back in June, I was here at a meeting. We talked about LERTIS, right? Uh, I'm the founder of the Alliance to Stop the Line. It's regarding the 12-mile 500 KV line that Pennsylvania Power and Light is proposing to run from the Susquehanna Nuclear Power Plant through Neskapek, through the heart of the beautiful Sugarloaf Valley, and on down the line to Humboldt. It's, as many of you know, um, it's cutting right through many people's yards, right next to their homes, right? It's unheard of. So, anyway, back in June, we had about 1,700 petitions signed of people opposing this. Today, we have over 2,700 people who have signed who oppose this line. Um, we asked you folks, just for a refresher, we were asking council to immediately suspend all LERTIS provided in the last two years for any project south of the Susquehanna Power Plant. And the word is suspend. So we're asking for that to be put on the agenda for next month and voted on. The second thing that we would like on the agenda for next month and voted on separately is an immediate front, all new LERTIS for any project south of the Susquehanna Nuclear Power Plant. So again, it's a request for next month, and we're asking to please put it on the agenda and have two separate votes. Please don't combine them. That's what we're asking. Um, as many of you know that you have, some of you have been to the sites, you understand the magnitude of this, of this problem. All right? So that's why I'm here tonight, to ask. And that's it. So.
Thank you, Mr. Zola.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Raybo?
I'm going to repeat what I said back in 2018, after the vote back then, for extending the contract or offering the contract to then-manager Pedri. The rush to vote, to offer a contract, and believe me, I have no personal animus or hostility to any manager, then-manager Pedri, nor manager Crocamo. I think she's done, she's, she's doing the best thing, the best that she can do with what she's got, just like Dave Pedri did. Let me make that clear from the outset. This is not about personalities, Mr. Chair. This is about process. I'm being very emphatic about this, and I take great umbrage that somebody or any official is going to say, "I don't know what I'm talking about because I'm, I've been to state meetings since 2012," okay? I've been to county meetings since 2013, and I've been to city meetings in Hazelton that same time, like 2013. So I know my way around, Mr. Chair, okay? So that being said, I know what I'm reading, and I have the documentation to back it up. You know me well enough to know that, and so do all of you by now, should know that about me. This is not about personalities at all. The, the thing is, this is politics. This is not about personalities. Because of the fact that you bum rushed this through, this contract through, because of the fact it's an election year, okay? Just, now, the 2018 one was not an election year. This is an election year contract. So for somebody, for anybody to say this, there's no politics involved, I got some keys to the gates of heaven to sell you for a discounted price if you believe that there's no politics involved. There is. And as far as what Councilwoman Bryn Smith said about avoiding, or trying to deter nepotism, I would like to add one, one more, uh, problem Luzerne County has had throughout many years of its, of its infamous history: tribalism. And tribalism, when I say tribalism, I'm talking about the 7% of the population that controls 95% of the political elected offices and appointed offices. That is a statistical fact, and it's very easy to prove. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chairmembers of Council, ladies and gentlemen, if I'm wrong, I will gladly say I'm wrong, and I will, I will put myself at the well of this, uh, council, and I will apologize. But I know I'm right.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have public comment? Uh, just let the public speak first. Ms., oh, uh, I, there's, I think there's more people in the audience. Mr. Griffith, you wanted to speak?
I did give you a slip, did I, John? There should be a slip up there for me, I believe.
Oh, you know what?
Okay, all right. Um, under public comment, I just want to say that, you know, I've been the county comptroller since 2022 of this county. I've worked under Randy, and I've worked under Ramilda, and I will tell you that it's a pleasure to work with Ramilda. I meet with her weekly. With or without a contract, she has been fabulous to work with, and that's why I said in my letter exactly what I felt. I don't think the contract is appropriate. However, Ramilda is a fabulous person to work with. If there's a question or a problem with an audit, meets with me right away, gets her staff members on board right away. If there's a problem with something that I need a question about, the staff is always there. The staff has been fabulous to work with in this county. I, I look forward to the next term of working with her, as well as, you know, getting the county back to where Ramilda liked to have it, as the jewel of the Pennsylvania, crown jewel of Pennsylvania. That is a goal I know she shares, I share with her as well, and I think together we can get that to happen. I don't, my only concern is I want to make sure that we don't step on landmines along the way. We make 10 steps forward, and we end up getting 15 back because of something that we did incorrectly. That's my concern. So I do appreciate all the hard work that Ramilda's done in this county since 2023, and I look forward to working with her, with or without a contract. It makes no difference to me. She is fabulous to work with, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
And lastly, could I, if we could just get a timeframe of the extension of employment offer letter? I know that's not in the original proposal. Uh, when, do you have any idea when the public will get exposure to that? Any idea?
At the conclusion of this meeting, correct?
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thanks so much. I appreciate it.
Any other, Mr., uh, Mr. Walsh?
Jamie Walsh, Ross Township. Uh, just wanted to let council know on September 16th, I have the Office of Consumer Advocacy coming to town over the 500 KV line that they're proposing, that PPL's proposing. And, um, we're still working on a location for that, but, uh, they're going to be in town, they're going to visit the site, they're going to look at the alternate route, they're going to, um, you know, help guide through this process, because it looks like it's going to be a long road that, uh, a, a long fight that we have right now. So that is going to happen September 16th in the evening, um, working on a location and time, but I wanted you to at least get it on your calendars if you want to attend. And, uh, I'll, I'll send an email as soon as I have all of the information for you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Will that be in the Sugarloaf area somewhere?
It will be right now. It'll either be in Sugarloaf or Neskapek.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the audience? All right, we have two hands up on the Zoom. First, we have Annie V.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Annie Venetieri, Sugarloaf Township. Um, I, I'm speaking first on behalf of Luzerne County Community Action Coalition, um, or the community group working here in lower Luzerne County. We were appalled that our request recently to have an expert speaker was ignored. Um, and I'm speaking on behalf, behalf of Mr. Wildman, who is a resident Sugarloaf as well. We requested allowing subject matter expert on pyrolysis and chemical recycling, um, join this meeting to respond to a presentation that was given, uh, at a previous meeting by Altera Energy with equal time rather than a brief three-minute comment. Altera had approximately one-half hour to make claims about their technology, um, and we demand that the residents of this county, uh, get equal time to address their claims and share our concerns. Um, county council did not respond to our request, at least up, up to this date that we're aware of. Um, there was a pile of emails sent and no reply. We hope that as soon, uh, that soon at a future meeting, uh, we could invite an expert to speak. And in the meantime, the Altera matter has, um, at least in Sugarloaf, uh, been, uh, they have removed their, um, interest in that site, uh, we understand, uh, just this past, uh, week here. Uh, however, it's concerning to me that council, um, was not responsive, um, with a request like this, and, and just raises concerns for future dialogue. I, I think it would behoove council to, um, work on the response with the public. There are a lot of people that care about this county, um, and, and we, we feel that if we ask, uh, to have someone present, especially someone who is expert, um, in a field, a matter expert, that that be considered. Uh, it's, it's concerning that, uh, sometimes the wheels seem to, to turn rather slowly. I understand you have a lot on the docket. We appreciate the work that you do, but I think this is an area that absolutely needs, um, some improvement. Uh, but we are grateful to hear that for now Altera will not be at the Sugarloaf location. We'll continue to push back if they choose to, uh, find another location in the region. We think it's very concerning, um, technology that's, uh, a lot of pollution that is not welcome for. Um, and I would also, and this is a personal capacity, you know, I'm not under Luzerne County Community Action Coalition. I would like to, um, support what Mr. Zola said in his statement, um, regarding LERTIS. I know that's a scary topic. I know it's controversial, uh, but I think that it really, um, it, it again, would be good for council to look at, look at this from all angles and, uh, take, take personal opinions off of it and really look at what serves the whole community, both, uh, large businesses and community stakeholders as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your time.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Venetieri. And, and I believe, as I'm sure you're aware, um, the Infrastructure Committee has had several meetings regarding, um, the pyrolysis plant, and Mr. Sabatino actually has a comment or two he'd like to make regarding that.
Um, we were going to address this at our next infrastructure meeting, which would be the third Tuesday of the month, but due to the fact that the majority are going to be at the conference, uh, the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Conference next week, we have to find another date, and scheduling has been hard in the summer due to vacations. So we, uh, fully intend to make good on our, our promise to have the expert speak and to continue with the resolution, uh, to deliberate the resolution against Altera. Even though they're not coming to Luzerne County, they are still seeking a permit from DEP, and we'd like to weigh in on it. So we haven't forgotten about you. It's just been, uh, a weird time in the summer trying to get something scheduled and on the books. My apologies.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Sabatino. Thank you, Ms. Venetieri. Uh, next up, we have a person, uh, with the name Beyond Plastics. Could you please state your name and your municipality?
Hi, my name's Jess Conard. I'm the Appalachia Director for Beyond Plastics. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to say-
Can you just, can you repeat your name, ma'am? I apologize.
Yep, Jess Conard.
Connors, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, Beyond Plastics is a, a national organization that seeks to educate media, policymakers, and the public on the plastic pollution crisis. And I just want to say that I fully support, um, Annie Venetieri's, um, response.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, we have Mr. Herring.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you, Mr. Herring. Go ahead.
Excellent. Uh, well, good evening, council. I want to, uh, I want to congratulate, uh, Manager Crocamo for this contract tonight. I think that, um, you know, for those of us who pay maybe a little bit more attention than others, you know, it has been, um, nice to see. You know, especially in recent news articles or recent, uh, news clips where I think there was a, uh, potential political issue going on at the, uh, the concert. And I thought that her kind of staying in the middle of the ground there and keeping politics away from recreational activities was, was really a testament to, I think, how far the county has come in that regard. So I do appreciate that, and, uh, you know, congratulations to her. She did make a comment, though, that she makes mistakes, as we all do, as we all do every day. And, uh, my hope, now that this is a, a settled issue, is that one mistake that was made with the removal of Mr. Joseph Grante, be rectified. Um, I believe all charges should be dropped against him. I believe he was improperly removed through a meeting. And, uh, again, I think we can, uh, rectify our mistakes, and I hope that's one that we do. Thank you. And again, I think we can rectify our mistakes, and I hope that's one that we do, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Anybody else public comment? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's 7:06, we'll restart at 7:15.
So moving forward, do all next county managers need to have a contract in order? Does it just stop with her?
It could stop with her, it continues, yeah. And here's the other thing that annoys me, you're saying you tie their hands, no you don't. And here's the thing, we all know in politics, because I've been on several boards, county, I mean, county council, West West End Council, I've seen people with a vindictive attitude come in and fire somebody for no cause or no reason. And guess what, too bad, I have a friend that wants that. And that's what, that's what that's the protective against, that's right.
Council members, please take your seats, we're going to get started with the work session. All right, council members, we're going to get the meeting restarted. Please come back. All right, council members.
I'm still here, John.
All right, count, all right, we have Greg, okay. Leanne's on the Zoom. Oh, yeah. All right, everybody. All right, I'd like to call the work session to order, we already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Krasnowski? Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
We have 10 of 11.
Okay, thank you. All right, any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
Just one addition, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Could we put Mr. Zola's suggestion at the end of last meeting on, which would be a moratorium on lures going forward and a potential cessation of lures?
It does, I mean, if you'd like to make that motion.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion, yeah.
All right, where are we putting that, number nine?
Yeah, sure, number nine is fine.
All right, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Second.
All right, motion and a second.
On the question.
Uh, okay.
I'm just wondering, would the public get upset that it wasn't publicized or advertised? Would they want to be here to talk about that or not?
I mean, it's the work session, so you can add it, I mean, you know, I, yeah. All right, there's a motion and a second, let's have a roll call on this.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Uh, no.
We have three no's, seven yes.
Okay, thank you, it's added, number nine. Let me just write it in, okay. All right, any other additions or deletions? All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda's adopted. All right, agenda item number one, I'm not reading that thing again. So, the discussion regarding the ordinance. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, good evening. My name is Ryan Hottenstein, I'm with FSL Public Finance, FSL Public Finance, engaged as the county's municipal advisor. With me tonight, I just want to make some introductions, is Scott Kramer, Representative Raymond James, Kyle Denon, also with FSL Public Finance, and participating remotely, representatives from Obermeyer Bond Council on this transaction. Just want to take a little bit of time and kind of go through an overview of what that long ordinance that you so well-read at the last meeting really is and what the purpose of it is. So for you tonight, we have a presentation which you all have hard copies of, they're also on the screen here. Want to start with kind of where the municipal market interest rates are for outstanding debt. Then we're going to get into the county's debt portfolio, discuss the refunding opportunity that you currently have in front of you, and then open it up for any questions that you may have. So moving on just to page four, if you want to take a look, there's a quick municipal market update. The thing I want to focus on most really is that top section, which says AAA MMD. AAA MMD is the benchmark for which tax-exempt bonds, which this county of Luzerne would sell, is based off of. And in particular, I want to highlight the two-year and the five-year because as we move in to the pieces of debt we're looking to discuss in particular, it's within that timeframe. As you can see from a year-over-year perspective, that column on the far right, the two-year is down about 53 basis points, or half a percent. The five-year is down about 29 basis points, month-over-month we're also down, and week-over-week we're also down. Taking a look at page five, you can see that as well when you take a look at this line graph. You can see on those last parts there in 25, particularly that five-year MMD, which is the blue line on the bottom, you can see has dropped fairly significantly since April of 2025. Moving on to discuss your outstanding debt portfolio. On page seven, you see the county currently has five pieces of long-term obligation outstanding. The total principal outstanding on those five pieces equals $125,150,000. In addition to that, you do also guarantee two pieces of redevelopment authority notes. But what we're really going to focus on tonight is the general obligation debt service of the county. In particular, if you look on the chart below, you have two pieces of debt that are highlighted in yellow. In particular, if you look on the chart below, you have two pieces of debt that are highlighted in yellow. The first one, the general obligation bond, Series A of 2015, and the second one highlighted in yellow, the guaranteed Luzerne County IDA bond, Series of 2017. The current outstanding balance on the 15 As is $54,865,000, with an interest rate of 5%. The second one is lower, at 18 point, uh, 18.3 million, also with coupon of 5%. The final maturity on those for the 2015 A is November 15, 2029, and on the 2017s is December 15, 2027. You will see in that one column that says call date, the call date on the Series A of 15 is November 15, 2025, and the call date on the 17 is December 15, 2025. Well, what that means is, at those dates, you have the ability to refund those bonds for cost savings if market rate conditions allow. Currently, based on current market rate, uh, conditions, it would make sense for the county to move forward and refund those at cost savings to the county and its taxpayers. If we look at page eight, this is just a summary of your current outstanding debt service, and in particular, we want to pay attention to the columns labeled A through F. Column A is the 2015 As that we were talking about, and column D is the 2017 IDA bonds that we're talking about. In total, right now, your current gross debt service is about 27.2, 0.3 million in '26, it's about 27.4 in '26, '27, it is 27.44, and then it drops in '28 to 26.7, 26.4 in '29, and then finally, only 6 million in 2030, when all of your general obligation, general fund debt service is paid off in full. Taking a look at what the potential refunding savings to the, uh, the county currently are, is, we're assuming market rates as of July 30, 2025. We're assuming your current rating from S&amp;P, which is an A-stable, um, from S&amp;P Global, and we've solved this refunding level or descending debt service in aggregate. So when we look at your aggregate debt service portfolio, what we wanted to do was achieve a level debt service so that every single year, moving forward, your debt service will be the exact same or slightly lower as you move forward, so that your budgetary impact isn't going to be anything new to your budget. Right now, based on current market rates, if you take a look at that bottom chart in page, where it says 2025 refunding, we can refund both the 2015 As and the 2017 IDA bonds for a total net savings, after all costs of issuance and fees, of $2.4 million to the county, or 4.15% of your refunded par amount. Looking at page 11, this gives you the projected future debt service, and you can see, we took out in column A, we took out that 2015 As, because we refunded those, we refunded the balance of the 2017 IDAs, and we have the new debt service in column, in column G, of 26.44 million, which really remains level through 2029, when it drops to 26.23, and then 6.17 for that last year, just as it is in 2030. Page 12 shows you what that budgetary impact is on your budget, and when you look at your column savings in either column C or column I, they're the same, but in 2025, we're projecting savings for this budget year of $827,000, 2026, $946,000, 2027, a million, 2028, $279,000, and 2029, $170,000, bringing your total gross savings to the county over those five years at $3.2 million. And again, that is all net of fees. Taking a look at the timeline, which is the next section, kind of where we are, the first, and one of the first and most important steps is this first one tonight, the introduction of that ordinance and this work session, which we're doing tonight. We are looking then to have a rating call. Towards the end of August, right now, we're looking, shooting for the week of August 25th, and then ultimately, have you approve the ordinance at your meeting on August 26th, file with DCED, at which point, we will wait for them to give their final, their approval. We will price the bonds, um, right, um, around the middle, uh, to late September, September 23rd is when we're looking to price the bonds. At that time, that's when your actual savings and interest rates will be locked, so at that point, they will be locked in. And then we are looking to close October 15th, and the transaction will be completed, and with great results for the county. Uh, one thing I would want to point out is, we have worked very diligently with the county administrative staff, Manager Crocamo, Budget and Finance, Ms. Rozell, and also the Solicitor's Office. Over the last six months, since we've been engaged, to put all of these things, and their help has been tremendous in getting us to where we are, so that we can move this forward and achieve these cost savings for the county. Happy to address any questions that you may have.
Mr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you for the presentation and, uh, that, uh, you paint a very positive financial picture going forward the next four and a half years or five years, uh, that's great. I just said one question, um, I noticed on page 12, the net savings to the county in column I.
Yep.
Total 3.2 million.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm back on page 10, the net present value savings was 2.4, is the difference in numbers because you brought the numbers back to present value?
That's exactly what it is, so we take the arbitrage yield on the bonds, and we present value those back to today, and get the net present value.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Stevenson, you have a question?
No, no question, but this is amazing, um, I appreciate the, the organization that took place here, this is extremely understandable, um, and I, I really appreciate the dates and the action plan to proceed forward, that is, that is fabulous, great work, everyone, that is amazing.
All right, thank you, any, anything else, Mr. Haas?
Yeah, I, thanks, Mr. Chair, I just heard, I think I was on the way over here, that the Fed's looking at probably dropping rates next cycle, so I think this is very, really, an incumbent time to do this, and hats off to you and the management for this together.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabatino.
Good evening, is there a risk that the rates will go up in the next, I know, Mr. Haas just said.
Ultimately, there's always that market race movement, so in between now and we print, we are going to have that interest rate risk. Actually, when we did this at 2000, uh, from July of '30, right now, we've seen a slight dip again, um, so they have come down slightly. But, you know, it should still remain in this area, obviously, I can never guarantee that, but there is that market rate risk, you're right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council members? Mr. Thornton.
And then new rates are locked in.
On the day of pricing.
23rd of September?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, division reports for July 2025.
As always, if council has any questions, uh, or comments, uh, you can text or call me, uh, but, uh, I believe the division report speaks for itself, and I just want to commend the staff for all the work that they do.
Thank you, I just have, uh, one or two things, not even really questions, just more comments. First, I'm a little upset that I wasn't invited to the Kingston Active Adult Centers Wing Creek Casino Trip. I hope I'm invited on the next one, okay, I might have had free play there, but now it's going to be gone.
They do get upset when John isn't there.
They like me there. I, I apologize, I was my, I was on vacation.
I had fun at the picnic. With, with all the seniors. Pardon? Yeah, but with John.
With, with me not there, Brian was able to shine.
Yeah, I, I had many requests for dances because John wasn't there.
I also just wanted to say, congratulations and thank you to Alan Stout, uh, for another successful Rockin' the River series. Um, as always, those three concerts were fantastic, um, I understand that there was, you know, some controversy with that last one, but I think we really, you know, made lemonade out of lemons there, um, and there was a fantastic crowd for that final night, something I'm very proud of, very proud that Luzerne County does, and currently, we have the Rockin' the Mountain, the second part of that series is going on. I think this Friday is one of the concerts, um, and looking forward to that as always, and finally. Yeah. It had to be hundreds of dollars, because I got dunked about 300 times. Go ahead.
How many times did Patty?
Mike, come on.
It was very blurry. It was blurry, go ahead.
Do we know, do we know how much?
I do not know the exact figure.
I think it was 8:40 the first night, I, I didn't get it.
Six something the, the second week.
Yeah, and, and most of it was because of John.
I was going to say, about 600 of it was me. I was waterlogged at the end of that night. And, uh, finally, I just wanted to mention, I, I know that, uh, we had the moment of silence for Corrections Officer Connell, um, earlier, but I, I did want to, uh, just make one statement, that I, I actually attended her viewing, her services, um, this past week, and, uh, I was very impressed with the Corrections Officer's honor guard. It was something that, to me, was very moving, um, and I was, I was really glad that they were there. It's something that I know means a lot to the family, I participate in my fire department's honor guard almost every chance I get, because I know how important that is to the family. And they were so professional, uh, they looked awesome, and I, I just, I wanted to extend my gratitude personally for that, because I know just how impactful their presence there is to not only the family, but to people who knew her and loved her. All right. Moving on, number three, discussion regarding the resolution modifying the lease with Can Do Community Foundation for county-owned lands in Butler Township.
Mr. Gary Lamont with the Can Do Community Foundation approached county staff regarding, um, the addition of a trail, a wellness and inclusive trail at the Firwood Music Camp, which the property is owned by Luzerne County. Originally, Firwood Music Camp was started by the Greater Hazelton Philharmonic Society, and there was an assignment of the lease that was signed in August of 2017, um, where the Can Do Community Foundation took over that property. But they cannot make any permanent improvements to the property, because the county owns it without the county's approval. So, um, I think I did send Sharon the map of the proposed trail, I don't know if there are any questions, I believe Mr. Lamont is on via Zoom as well.
Does this, uh, affect the farm leases that we just?
No, no, we just have to iron out exactly, you know, those properties, but those farmers were told, um, after I spoke with the Office of Law, that they should proceed with planting and everything.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
I apologize, uh, for property located on Route 11 Wyoming Ave, Wyoming Borough. For people on the Zoom that I accidentally cut off.
This is, uh, the lease that was discussed, uh, earlier in executive session.
Correct. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to number five, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to apply for municipal assistance grant to aid in funding an updated zoning ordinance. Ms. Barich, Mr. Reese, light open microphone.
I have Dan Reese with me, um, and I'll let you give him, he'll give you a little bit more of the background, but, um, the county zoning ordinance needs to be updated, and we've talked to DCED, if we apply, uh, through this program, you know, we can get up to 50% of the cost of that.
Okay.
And we currently have an RFP out now, we don't know what the cost is going to be that we're going to ask, uh, DCED for, but once we figure that out, uh, through the RFP, then we'll be able to have more figures in place. The last time the zoning ordinance was updated, it was in 2021, and there's been some changes, uh, recently with development patterns throughout the county, so we just want to make sure that our zoning ordinance accounts for that.
All right, any questions?
Two questions, Mr. Chair. Hey, Mr. Reese, thanks for coming.
Yeah.
Of course, so, this is pretty standard practice, isn't it, does DCED typically reimburse 50% for ordinances or Ms. Barich, if you want to address that as well?
It depends on the, it depends on the program.
Yeah.
But, but, you know, we had initial conversations, I think, back in May with DCED, and they encouraged us to apply, you know, for the September pot of money, because, well, hopefully, they will have a budget passed by then, um, so.
But, again, if we don't apply for it this round, they do two rounds every year usually, the next one would be available March 1st for us to apply for. So if we don't apply for September 1st, well, which would be the second, because Labor Day's on the 1st this year, but, um, we would be able to apply next March.
Okay, very good, thank you both, uh, second, second and last question is, what, what areas do you see of our countywide zoning, or at least the jurisdictions that we have zoning, for, what changes do you see coming down the pipe here?
We don't have any, uh, we don't have anything in there for data centers, and that's been a huge, uh, talking point.
We're kind of familiar with those.
Yeah, so, we just want to make sure that our zoning ordinance takes that, stuff like that into account. There's also some, uh, initiatives coming from the state for things like, um, accessory dwelling units on properties. Right now, you can only have one primary residence or one primary structure in a property, uh, you're not, uh, you can go for zoning, uh, variants in order to have more properties, or more housing on your property, but, uh, accessory dwelling units allow for smaller, almost tiny house, or, you know, uh, in-law suites to be constructed on the property. So you can have more than one residence technically on your property, and then there, there's a few other things that we're looking at too, like chickens. I know that's been a huge thing, but right now, the minimum size lot that you can have chickens in an agricultural area is five acres. The smallest lot that you can have in an ag area is two acres, so we're going to, we're trying to, we want to bring in a consultant to help us visit those topics, see what other parts of the state have done with that.
No, that's, that's helpful, I, I remember the chicken debate too, that was real fun. Two acres for, what, what type of, of zoning, that was, agriculture is five, I thought you said.
It is five in our zoning ordinance now, but the smallest lot size you can cut out in, uh, agricultural areas is two acres.
In agriculturally zoned area, two acres, okay, interesting, all right, very good.
You need, now, currently, you have, you need five, but we're going to try.
Shrinking that down.
Yeah.
Mr. Sabatino.
There's also, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, there's some inconsistencies between our, within our current zoning ordinance, just, there's a little bit of contradiction, I can't go into super detail on that now, but we have, uh, tables in the back that tell you what you can and can't do, and then some of the language in there kind of contradicts what the tables say, so we want to make sure that those are all ironed out. And there's also a slew of spelling errors in there as well, so we just want to make sure that those are taken into account.
Good evening, Mr. Reese, um, will you be addressing, like, solar farms and things like that as well?
Solar farms are actually in our current zoning ordinance, but we want to update that.
Attorney Skeen has a question.
What about other chicken areas? Because people have chickens in areas that aren't agricultural.
That will be visited in this zoning ordinance update.
So we'll have all chicken questions answered?
As many as we can possibly do.
All right, thank you.
There's one chicken question that I think might not be answered, white across the road.
Yeah.
White across the road, which came first, yeah, I'm sorry.
Might my, might my neighbors lose their yard chickens?
What municipality do you live in?
West Wy, I don't live in, they're not my neighbors, they're, it's, they're mixed up with the male all the time, West Wyoming.
Potentially.
They're going to be so upset.
Don't snitch on the guys with the chickens.
That is one of the municipalities we do zoning for, so.
Any other non-chicken related questions?
Okay, me, I might, I think I have a question.
And, and, Dan, I don't know much about, like, the construction of zoning and what that looks like across all of the municipalities,
but essentially, how we sort of reshape that depending on the municipality and, like, space and acreage, right, if I'm in, and if I'm in the ballpark, I don't know. The red rig is not there, but, um, it, as we kind of update this, like, this will allow, like, certain to create more housing in different spaces and make that legally acceptable?
That is, that is one thing that's coming down from the state currently, you know, historically, there have been triplexes and quadplexes available in, uh, residential areas throughout history, well, development in the early 20th century, but once zoning came on board, it was single-family residents or apartment complexes.
Right.
There really wasn't the availability for that, and the state is actually, there is a push in the legislature to have, have that added in there, but I want to visit that with the zoning ordinance update as well.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds amazing, I mean, I was just having a conversation with someone about, like, you know, like, Wilkes-Barre, for example, like, the history of Wilkes-Barre, how redlining sort of plays dynamics of how we sort of arrange zoning throughout, so I'm like, is, are these things that are going to be addressed, are we going to be in-depth, um, you know, seeing what that looks like, how that's either impacted those municipalities, and how we can successfully change that zoning language to be more inclusive?
I don't believe we're going to be doing that in this update, but we will be taking a heavy look at the comprehensive plan for the county, just to ensure that, you know, we're, we're putting development where it's necessary and keeping places, uh, conserved where that seems appropriate.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number six, discuss, sorry, discussion regarding resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease renewal agreement between Luzerne County and Dom Fork Enterprises Incorporated.
I'm not sure if anyone is here from the courts or online, but this is a building that our domestic relations has been in, in the Hazleton area. We've been housed there for decades. And years ago, when I was a young lawyer, I used to practice in that building, and it was actually the safest building in the county years ago, and it still may be. But it's a very good location, parking, and we've been there forever.
All right, thank you. Any questions? There's nobody on, on the Zoom, by the way. All right, moving on. Number seven, discussion regarding the Water Street Bridge.
Our special guests, please. Michelle and Tom, please come to the podium.
There we go. I think we're good.
Just, this has been a collaborative effort with, between the county and West Pittston and Pittston. We want something more than just a river crossing. We really, we want a landmark of artistry that represents the strength and the hope of Luzerne County. So, Michelle?
Great. Thank you, everybody. I am Michelle Dempsey. I am president of DX Dempsey Architecture. I'm also here tonight with my colleague Cory Trailberg. And it, it has been an honor, and we are so grateful to have had the opportunity to collaborate with your communities on this firefighter's memorial bridge. When we started the project, the first thing we did was listened, and we had a visioning meeting. And at that visioning meeting, we heard what your vision was, because that's what we're here to interpret. And the very first thing we heard was the purpose of this bridge, among many other things, but one very important purpose is to honor the fallen firefighters, one from each community, who gave their lives in service to these communities back in 1993, John Lombardo and Leonard Insalaco II. So that was front and center through this entire design process. Then we heard, we want the bridge to be uplifting. We want it to show strength and resilience. We want it to be a symbol of unification. We want it to be beautiful. We want it to be a destination, a place that we can have layered experiences, festivals, music, different stories as you cross it. And we wanted to bring all of that into the fold, and we heard, we want to be wowed, and we want to create a destination. So with all that, I think the best way to introduce the bridge design is to play the video, and after the video, we'll put up some slides and answer, and speak to a few more things. But Harry, if you could play the video, I'd appreciate that. It's a couple minutes long. Yep. The. We're not seeing it yet. That's okay. That's it. Thank you. "The Bridge of the Brave, an esplanade of hope and remembrance, gracefully spans the river, uniting two communities bound by shared resilience. Modern and deeply symbolic, its design reflects strength and pride. The bridge's undulating form mirrors the river below, evoking the flow of water and the arc of a firefighter's hose, a powerful symbol of life-giving and lifesaving force. Beneath, vertical metal sentinels hint at the flickering of flames and the raw, jagged resonance of fire, embodying both comfort and danger. At the entrance, a bold "Bridge of the Brave" sign and exhibit panels honor two fallen firefighters, one from each community, John Lombardo and Leonard Insalaco II, sharing their story of courage and sacrifice. The crossing invites deeper discovery through panels rhythmically spaced along the path, each celebrating individuals who built and protected their communities, connecting past, present, and future. More than a bridge, it is a gathering place. A broad promenade invites art walks, festivals, and pop-up events, transforming it into a vibrant community space. Each crossing feels different. Mornings bring dappled light and optimism, while twilight signals reflection. By day, shifting shadows move with the sun and season. By night, the bridge transforms into a canvas of light, casting brilliant reflections on the water. Brief evening illuminations ripple like water, flicker like fire, and then settle into a steady glow, a beacon of strength and resilience for all to witness." Thank you. If you could turn to the slides now, Harry? Thanks. So that is the concept. We have some slides here, just to speak to some of the feedback we've heard so far, and just make sure we are hitting everybody's concerns. Obviously, the name, "Bridge of the Brave" can be, it was just something we thought was catchy, emotive, memorable, but we could be "Bridge of the Brave, Firefighter's Memorial Bridge." It could just be "Firefighter's Memorial Bridge." That's up to your communities to decide. There was some concern about the sentinels at the bottom being too low, but we've worked with the engineers and with PennDOT, and that's, they're going to be high enough, and everything there is, is good to go. I did want to note, because I don't know if it was very clear in the, in the video, that the actual pattern of the sort of, you know, up and down of the sentinels, that sort of jagged pattern, was created by overlaying the actual sound of fire. And, and then obviously, the top represents the water and the flow of the firefighter's hose. Some other feedback, if you could flip now, Harry, to the next slide. So again, this is on one side, this is the Pittston entrance. We will show a concept of the West Pittston entrance as well. It's later in the tech, it's more conceptual because we didn't have the information on the levees yet, so we're not 100% sure how to express that. Next slide. We do want to point out that, you know, as you cross this, there can be storytelling that can be about each of the communities, so that as you cross, these, these panels can, can tell stories about the firefighters, can tell stories about brave people in the communities, about your communities. So again, it's those layered experiences, and we. The barriers are quite tall for the, for the cars, right? It is a bridge, and it does have important safety reasons for being at that height. So for kids, we have the panels sort of at a lower, you know, there's like a lower level for kids and then a higher level for adults, so, because they only get to see the river at the openings, at the outlooks, so they get an experience as they cross too, and it could be a learning opportunity as well. Next slide. And then at night, you can see it can light up. Again, the lighting, we have talked to and have gotten a proposal from a lighting consultant. This could be something, when we talk about creating a destination and, and having something that really brings people here from the community, you can imagine, or from all around to come see. You can imagine, maybe at nine o'clock every night, there's a light show. These would be LED. And really, it's how far, you know, I think we could do something really amazing within a reasonable budget. But I think this, you know, you could imagine the lights flowing on the top, flickering on the bottom, and having it be something different for festivals and different times of years to celebrate, you know, what's going on in, in each community and in the area. Next. And next slide. And this is the sketch of the, the West Pittston side, which is a little bit more of a residential and historic community. So the entrance from that side will be a little bit more traditional, maybe some limestone. But you can see there on, on each of the sides, those are the medallions from the firefighter's helmets that will celebrate John Lombardo and Leonard Insalaco. And so it'll be a beautiful transition from the historic neighborhood to this sort of very forward-thinking and beautiful expression of today, tomorrow, and what's to come. So that's the, that's the design for the firefighter's memorial bridge, and happy to take any comments at this time.
Any questions from council members? I just want to, oh, Ms. Stevenson, you go first. Go ahead.
No questions. I think this is beautiful. The intentionality behind every layer of this constructed bridge image is amazing. You must be extremely good at what you do.
She is.
This is really amazing. So thank you for showing us the full vision. That was extraordinary.
Thank you so much. And like every design, you know, everybody, all of us with gifts, it's always, they're better with collaboration. And this is a great collaborative effort with your communities and with my team and with PennDOT and with Tom. So thank you so much.
Any other comments? Mr. Thornton.
Could you get this bridge built in six months from now?
That's a question for Tom. No, I'm just kidding.
It's been closed since August of '21.
Yeah. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate and echo what Councilwoman Stevenson said. Truly, it's beautiful. I would be so proud to have this bridge in our area. I hope we can get it done quickly, but well, done well. And thank you for all your work. It's truly stunning.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Anybody else? I, I just wanted to say that, I have two things. First, architecturally, I think the bridge is, and I know I this first, it's something that will definitely complement the skyline of Greater Pittston. And, and that was one of the concerns that I had when we embarked upon this bridge project, that we wouldn't just have another utilitarian concrete slab going over the Susquehanna River to replace something that was such an integral part of Pittston and West Pittston for the last 110 years. So to see that is amazing, to see that it kind of harkens back a little bit to what the previous bridge looked like, even the idea of having lights on the bridge, really, really amazing. And I apologize, but namesake of one of the firefighters who passed away, I just want to say thank you, because it is truly an amazing tribute. And when I was running for county council in '21, I didn't know that this bridge was going to close. I didn't know that any of this was going to happen while I was here. And, you know, truthfully, I wish it didn't, but I'm so proud to be able to see what this bridge will be. Thank you.
That means everything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Number eight, discussion regarding the resolution approving the financing by redevelopment authority of Luzerne County, sorry, of County of Lackawanna, of certain projects for the benefit of the Diocese of Scranton Catholic School System Incorporated, a Pennsylvania not-for-profit corporation serving the public.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Brian Kuslawski with the law firm Stevenson Lee, and we are bond counsel to the Catholic school system in this financing. What they're trying to do is make improvements to 12 of their schools across Northeast Pennsylvania, including five in Luzerne County. As you've seen in the past for these types of financing, one of the tax code requirements is that there's, we hold a public hearing, and that every municipality where a part of the project is located has to approve that TEFRA hearing. There's no obligation on the county. That form of the resolution that we've provided is very similar to what you've seen before for these types of financings. The question I have tonight, though, is, obviously, we can't be on the, the next council's agenda. We would look to be on the ninth agenda for the actual resolution, because we have to have that TEFRA hearing in between now and that, and the approval of that. But the question we had is, we've asked all of the five municipalities, just to make things easier on the diocese, you know, least time-consuming, least expensive, can we have a central TEFRA hearing in Lackawanna County where the authority is based, or do we want to have, do each municipality want to have their own TEFRA hearing located in their county? We've asked the other ones. We've gotten answers from all of them. We wanted to present it to council tonight, though, of can we have that central TEFRA hearing? Would you like to have one in county office or in the county courthouse? It's really up to you. We're happy to do it. It's really just a matter of, we would advertise in the county, obviously, so everybody would know that the hearing's going on. It would list the projects, and you've seen a draft of that TEFRA notice. But we're just trying to make it as, you know, as easy on the municipalities as we can and make sure that everybody's comfortable with the approach. That's the only thing, the only direction we need tonight, one to answer any questions that you may have on the projects, but the direction of how do you want us to handle the public hearing on behalf of Luzerne County? Here, or is it okay if we do it centrally in Lackawanna County?
Thank you. Manager Crokmal, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that. Do you have a preference? I, I personally don't have an issue with it just being in Lackawanna County, if this is just essentially a.
I don't have a preference, but other than, other than that, we're fun in Luzerne County.
This has been. And as you know, from these, very rare for anybody to attend these. They're very, you know, it's a tax code requirement that we have.
Right.
So it's, but we're happy to have it here. It's, we're going to advertise in all five municipalities. So it's really just a matter of, of your direction.
I have no objection.
I personally don't. If anybody does, please speak up. Mr. Thornton?
Thank you. Just curious, what is the scope of projects? Is it just renovating the schools or what?
It is. There's the five schools in Luzerne County, and most of it consists of roof repairs, new roofs, windows. There's a boiler that's needed in one, some site work. So no new buildings or expansions. It's really just updates to those facilities. And they're doing that all across their 12, you know, 12 facilities in, in Northeast Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Oh, Attorney Skeen?
Brian, do you need, if council were going to agree to that, do you need a resolution?
No, not, not really. I just wanted to have that direction and have the conversation. Now, obviously, we'll be back for the approval of the resolution itself, but I didn't want to have a hearing without talking to, you know, council. We've done that in the other municipalities as well.
I, yeah, I think you have your answer. Obviously, we can't, like, deliberate in this, in this session, but I, I think you, you pretty much have your answer.
That's fine. Thank you very much. What we will do, as I mentioned, you'll see an ad in the newspaper with that TEFRA hearing. We'll provide the affidavit of publication when we send in the final paperwork, along with the transcript. You know, did anybody appear and what did they have to say? And we'll get all that ready. The resolution's going to look very much like it is right now. We're just going to fill in, fill in data, the TEFRA hearing, but we'll get that back so you could have it on your, your voting session for September 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Have a nice evening.
All right, finally, number nine, a discussion regarding a moratorium on any future LERTA south of the power plant.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, for entertaining that. So, folks, we have the Infrastructure Committee. We met earlier in the spring and the summer. We brought the, the LERTA schedule to a whole council vote, which was then tabled. And now it's been six weeks, and we've had no forward momentum on this. I really appreciate Mr. Zola bringing this forward, because this is in the public interest. We've got that situation now in South County. It's affecting a lot of people's livelihoods and quality of life down there in South County. And I think council needs to act in order to show the people that we are fighting for them and that we think unchecked development is not necessarily the best idea. I don't think anybody here is against development per se, but there's a lot of appropriate ways that we can examine it. It seems to me that it's not being done. So therefore, that being said, I'd like to have us on the next voting session, vote on what Mr. Zola suggested, to have a moratorium on LERTAs south of, of the plant and follow through on the potential to cancel out previous LERTAs that enabled this kind of unchecked development to happen. And so I'd like to have the discussion on that.
Ms. Stevenson, did you have something that you want to say?
Yes, just to, just to confirm, what were Mr. Zola's two requests that he made during his comment?
The first one was the moratorium on future LERTAs south of the Susquehanna Power Plant, and the second one was rescinding any previous LERTAs south of the Susquehanna Power Plant. Is that correct, Mr. Zola?
Suspend.
Suspending, okay.
Is that where the new AI is supposedly going by right by the power plant?
There's one by the power plant that's already, that's, that's going forward, but the one up in top of the 80s there. That's the one that we, we approved that LERTA.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Skeen, can we actually suspend LERTA?
Not without getting sued.
In my research about it as well, unfortunately, we really can't suspend a LERTA that we've already approved.
So I wouldn't entertain the suspension.
So I wouldn't entertain the suspension, but I would like the moratorium to be placed on the next voting session as well.
Is this, I mean, I'd like some specificity on this. Certainly, you can bring anything you want to the voting session. Is this moratorium going to be on any LERTA? Or will it be on LERTAs that will be similar to ones that involve data centers, things like that? Because I think that we're talking about specific issues here. And, and I know everybody on this council has opinions about tax abatements, LERTAs, the LERTA schedule was an exercise in that. And in fact, if I can note, data centers and technology would have gotten the most lucrative of the tax abatements in that, in that current schedule. So, I'm not really sure what the passage of that would have necessarily done to alleviate the concerns of the residents at this moment. So what's, is there some specificity to this, or will it just be a blanket, any LERTA south of the power plant?
Well, we, the committee tried to get specific, and that was just put down. So perhaps this is the best approach to take, have a more blanket approach. But I'll leave that to my colleagues to really hash that out. That's something that all 11 of us have to come to consensus on. So, I don't...
Well, is it, is it data centers that will rely on that power line?
That particular power line.
Because my, under, very limited understanding of any kind of potential AI data centers in, at least, the Salem Township areas, that they will not need to use those PPL power lines. Right? We want to, it, it's the power lines that are at issue. Am I...
Do you want me to come up here and talk?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, we're trying...
Do you want to ask some questions, Al?
Yeah, we, we'd like to, you know, keep this discussion as brief as possible. We're happy to have your comments.
So, Ramilda, I'm not sure where that information's coming from, because we haven't been able to get any information as far as who exactly in the South Industrial Park and Sugarloaf is using that power. North Point Development told me themselves that they will be using some of the power from that 500 KV line, not all of it. Now, there's also rumor that Can Do needs some of it, and Sugarloaf now has proposed two data centers, which that 500 KV line directly lines up next to. These data centers and other industry in Humboldt are using this 500 KV line. It is only 12 miles long, which is very, very, very unusual. 500 KV lines usually travel for hundreds of miles, not 12 miles. So there's a whole bunch of energy going right there. This line directly feeds these billion-dollar corporations. And just so you know, average to large data center, billions of dollars annually net profit, right? These are big hitters. We're not trying to stop the power from getting to them. We want the power to get there. We have proposed multiple, very reasonable solutions to PPL as how they could get that power there without destroying lives and putting people's lives and children and grandchildren in grave danger. That's how serious this is. And many of you have been to my property. You know what I'm talking about. To overlook this would be criminal. Those factories and those data centers are using that power, and there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And if they're saying they're not, have them put it in writing, because it's a lie. It's a bold-faced lie.
Okay. I, just, a couple people have their, are, have questions. Mr. Wilovich has his hand up. Go ahead, Greg.
Yes, this is more of a question for Mr. Skeen. Could we add language to any new LERTA saying that if we were to, if, per se, were to use a power line of that size, we could void LERTA?
But normally, they produce the LERTA resolutions, and we approve them. So we could ask for different language to be in there. What I would say is, and I've probably said it here before, I don't get a vote, but there are going to be companies that want to come to Luzerne County. Our state, according to the governor, is very interested in trying to become a state where we have these businesses come in and we develop these kind of data centers. We don't have to have any in Luzerne County. That's up to county council. But if we put a moratorium on something, what that's going to do is stop business from wanting to come to Luzerne County. We will be known as a place that does not want to have business here. And if that's what you want to do, that's up to you to vote. But we're talking about also an easement that exists. So we may stop lucrative business development in Luzerne County, and then find out that PP&L uses their easement, and they put in the line anyway. Now, I, I suppose the plan is that if we have a moratorium on it and we don't allow LERTAs anymore, then there'll be no businesses coming here. And if there's no businesses coming here, then there'll be no reason for PP&L to put the line in.
Well, that doesn't really answer my question. My question was, is it would, if we would enact the LERTA, and would only, if they were to use any of the businesses that they incorporate into their plan or whatever later on down the line, even if it's speculative, if they were to ever use that kind of line, it would void the, the LERTA, basically?
I, I don't thi, I mean, me personally, Greg, this is just my opinion. I, I don't think that the issue necessarily is the power line. I think that the issue, Mr. Zola, if I'm, if I'm speaking incorrectly, please correct me, but I think that the issue is where the power line is, right?
That is the issue.
Yeah.
Here's the thing.
No, I get that. I get, I get, I get that that's the issue, but this would prevent them from wanting to bring power lines, because there'd be nobody to use them.
I mean, I, I, okay. I, I mean, Mr. Skeen, do you, do you, is that something, is that language that we can add into a, a LERTA resolution?
I'm sure we can. That's what I was trying to explain, though. If you, if you make that public, and you put in that kind of language, or say that that's what you're going to propose, then the businesses won't come here. Right? If they, if they need the power to be there, and you have developers, the way, the way it works is developer usually asks us for the LERTA. They may have an idea of who their tenants are going to be. But then, the LERTA would be so cumbersome that they would have to say that, that they're not going to use that power line. But if there's a power line coming through that's feeding power to their development, how are they not going to use the power? How is anybody going to sign, how are they going to sign any tenants that aren't allowed to use the power?
All right. Mr. LaScavage, then, then Mr. Sabatino, then Ms. Smith.
So I, all this stuff about these power lines, people, I think they really need to do their homework, because if you read up on the infrastructure in this country, it's poor at best. It's failing miserably throughout the country. So these bigger power lines are needed. And actually, I had a situation where one of these poles were put right in the driveway of my sister's house down in Skooko County. And she had asked, could you move it here or there? Nope, I have the right of way. But they did indicate that these power lines they're putting in aren't for today, they're for the next 50 years, which is understandable, because if you go back to a 50-amp service in a house, you wouldn't turn around and buy a house today with a 50-amp service, right? So, as the energy, which everybody enjoys for central air, and every appliance in their house, and all these conveniences Siri plugged in, and every, everything that we have today, that all comes at a cost. The cost is more energy. So, my question is, do they have the right of way, these properties you're talking about coming through?
Yeah, I want to explain that. I was just waiting until you guys were done. So, no, they don't. So that, that's incorrect. What they have is, they have a century-old right-of-way that's too small for this project, right? That is why they're using the threat of eminent domain. If they had a right-of-way, they don't need our permission. They would just go ahead and do it. Okay? But they don't. They need an extension on the right-of-ways that were there. You have to remember something. In the early 1900s, when people didn't have electricity in their homes, and Sugarloaf, Neskapek Valley had a scattered house here and there, that's when this, that's when that original line was put in. And they were very small wooden poles, not a big deal. Okay? Now what they want to do, oh, well, let's say, as things evolved, houses are now very densely populated along this whole proposed route. So you have houses all over now, not just a couple scattered farmhouse. And where before, they, they had little wooden poles, now they want to put these massive, the, the base diameter on these things?
Like between those two desks, that's about how big it is. And they tower up 240 feet tall with beacons on top. Right? And so, just envision, anyone, put yourself in our shoes, and picture your yard looking out your front window, your side window, your back window, and, and, and looking at this thing. Not to mention, the electromagnetic fields. And we had a scientist actually prove this last week on a 500 KV line. His meter read, his meter got a signal, 250 yards in each direction, not feet, two and a half football fields. He was still getting a reading. And they want to put these things right next to our house. So what this does, these electromagnetic fields, it's like an MRI. It, it just drives us, it makes all your cells in your body jump all over the place. And the MRI is okay, because it's quick. But when you're exposed to this stuff 24/7, not to mention, if you ever looked at PPL's contract that they want people to sign, it's the most one-sided agreement you've ever seen. You lose complete rights to your property. They could enter your property anywhere. They could build any structure they want on their, on, if they get their right-of-way. They could build any structure they want. They want to put up a maintenance building, they want to do whatever they want. They will not be restricted in their enjoyment. It says it clearly. They want to, they want to stage 20 bucket trucks along that right-of-way through your property? They could do it. They will not be restricted in their enjoyment. This thing is criminal. Luzerne County taxpayers need your help. We need your help. This thing is really bad. And, and picture this, too. Sure, some of you have grandkids. Some of you have kids. So what they intend to do is put a 200-foot wide strip through our properties, remove the grass, and put gravel, install their poles, and then their lines. Has to be maintained. How do they maintain that? Herbicides. So, in my particular circumstance, my daughter's house, it's, you guys, some of you saw, it's right on the basketball court of my daughter's house. It's where my grandsons play. So what are we supposed to do? When they come to spray, and they come without notice, by the way, they come to spray those herbicides, it's a big area. They don't use little hoses. These things are big. They start spraying this stuff. We supposed to gather up our kids, our grandkids, and run? It's, it's just unheard of. There, there is a better way, multiple better ways, for them to get this electricity to these, to these places. And the purpose of freezing and, and suspending the LERTAs is this. These are billion-dollar corporations. And let's not for, forget, Pennsylvania Power and Light is a for-profit company. They are not a government entity. Last 12 months, their net profit was a billion dollars. A billion. And they don't need LERTAs. What they need to do is they need all these corporations, these data centers. You want to come? Come. Not against data centers. Well, we got to do it the right way.
Well, PP&L isn't part of the LERTA.
I didn't say that. I was just saying how much profit they made. Right. So, but the purpose of the LERTA is like with the data centers and so forth. Those folks need to, because it's become, it's coming down to a cost and convenience issue for PPL. Refurbishing a line that's already in place will cost more money than what they're proposing to do. So it's time for these billion-dollar corporations to work with PPL and get some money together to take the alternate route. That's all we're asking for, is for them to use the alternate route.
Okay. Mr. Sabatino, did you have a comment you wanted to make before? I apologize.
Yes, have you approached the school districts and the local municipalities to ask for the same moratorium?
Not yet. We started here.
Generally, generally speaking, you're going in the reverse order of what we normally do. So I would also ask that you try and get the school district and local municipalities on board with this.
We are absolutely going to do that, yes.
And, and, by the way, those are the more lucrative tax abatements that you'd get, especially from the school district, as I'm sure you know. So, that's, I mean, that, that would be the make, more the make or break for them than us. We're the, the last, you know, peg in the...
It, it's still, it's still important, though. And, and don't forget, some of the folks involved in this might be outside of the Hazleton area school district. Right?
Okay.
But they are in Luzerne County.
Right. Mr. Haas, then, Mr., oh, Ms. Smith, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just briefly.
I apologize.
That's okay. Just briefly. I, unfortunately, in looking through this, I don't, there's not much I think that we can do. However, especially given that PP&L is the company, and they're the ones putting this line together. I know that you've given them alternate, correct?
Hmm?
You've given them alternate?
We have.
Yes. Perhaps the best thing, and this may sound a little underwhelming, but perhaps the best thing we can do is ask PP&L to come to a meeting and talk to them about the fact that this is the community that they are working in. You have very much upset your community members. You may need things from us one day. We're asking you to please listen, of course, more eloquently, but I think that's really one of the only things that we can do. But I will echo Councilman Sabatino, and you need to get to the school and the municipals first.
Yeah, to that point, though, Joanna, I appreciate the, the intention, but it will be fruitless. I promise you.
The schools and the municipals?
I'm meeting with PPL and asking them to do anything other than what they're proposing. It will be completely fruitless. We've had every, every politician up and down the ladder at it.
Well, I'm interested to see what Representative Walsh mentioned, that he's going to have the, the State Office of Consumer Affairs come in. I'm interested to see how that goes.
But were you, what were you, just, because I, maybe I don't completely understand, you were saying that would be the only thing you could do. What does that mean?
Well, beside, well, you asked for us to possibly put a moratorium on any LERTA, which, while I understand your point, I also understand Attorney Skeen's point, and, and I think the point that the county manager was making, in that this isn't all LERTAs. Not necessarily all LERTAs will be using this line.
Well, we don't know that. We don't know that. We don't know who's applying for LERTAs.
And that's another problem about LERTAs. I mean, that was one of the problems with the schedule, was that they're building to spec, right? Spec means speculation, which means they don't really know what their tenant's going to be. And then, in terms of your ask of us to suspend any LERTAs that we've given, we can't legally do that.
Well, my argument with that is, I feel that the county was not given the proper information.
I agree with you. I agree. I feel like we were duped. But I don't necessarily think that that means...
And may I finish?
Sorry, but yes.
I don't think they were given the proper information, number one. So leaving information out is as bad as lying about it. Right? And I don't think, I think all of you acted in good judgment. I don't put any of that on any of you guys. I think you all did what you thought was right. But I don't think you were given the right tools as to what to ask. And, and by virtue of them leaving out so much stuff that they should have told you, I think that is an argument. And again, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm thinking that's an argument.
Okay. Okay.
That's my point.
Thank you.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, could I, Mr.?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, thanks for coming again, Mr. Zola. And we, we really want to support you and the community. I think everybody is on the same page with that component, at least. And this, what's so hard about this is because I, I'm pretty zealous about this and these LERTAs, you know, I'm new in a few years. And I, I keep on thinking, I'm, I'm coming across like I'm anti-development or anti-energy or anti-infrastructure. And it's not about that. It's just about doing it the correct manner that's going to impact the, the community in the, in the least, in the least way, right? We want to maintain the quality of life best we can here. PP&amp;L and, and energy companies as such get paid by the transmission of the power. They don't get paid on the generation. Because we had a discussion on the energy supplier here with energy brokers here in Luzerne County a few weeks ago, maybe months ago. And it is what drives that, that, that construction of those lines are potential customers. So I agree with you 100% there, Mr. Zola. If this council can act and perhaps, you know, use the, the stick and say, oh, you want this customer base, can we slow that or at least make that in a manner that, that makes more sense developmentally speaking? And just this unchecked development that we have here, which is why I would support a moratorium on future LERTAs, because perhaps that would bring PP&amp;L to the table. I don't think it's going to happen because again, their profit motive is, is the transmission of it. And they make lines, and that's how they make their, their money.
And again, I want to emphasize that by no means are we attempting to, we want everyone to make money. We want everyone to be profitable. We want the community to thrive, right? We just, it's being rushed right now. And we just want it to be done intelligently. And we have, I want everyone to know, we have taken every amicable approach to PPL regarding this line. And they have not listened at all. They have not budged at all. So the only way to make things happen and the way that all of you could help the, the taxpayers of this community, because remember, it's going to be very few that benefit from this line. Very few, about five different entities that will benefit. But many citizens, taxpayers will suffer, right? So the only way to get anyone's attention anymore in this world is money. So if the LERTAs aren't available, it's going to bring them to the table and it's going to have them work together as a team to resolve this matter. And, and that's why we need your help. We, there's just, you know what I mean?
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I gotta have to take a break soon. I didn't go on a break. I didn't take a break when we had a break. But anyway, I, I just want to say for the record, I, I am very, I love the environment, very much against ruining the environment and all that. And then I, I really feel for all of you people in that part of the county that are experiencing this. And I hate to see that happen. And having said that, I, I was listening to what you said earlier, Mr. Zola, and, you know, one thing I heard you say is, you know, these, these big entities coming here, these big corporations are billion-dollar corporations. And you said they, they don't need LERTAs. They, they, they're so profitable that, you know, they don't need LERTAs, I heard you say. So now I'm wondering, why, why would we put a moratorium on LERTAs if they don't even need them anyway? They're going to build anyway. So what would be the purpose of our moratorium on LERTAs other than be a pure punitive? That's all.
Well, my, my point was, I'll just give you an example. So the Hazleton area school district provided a LERTA for North Point Development for a data center. So they're getting a 10-year tax abatement. And then they raised the school taxes 5.9%, the max, to senior citizens, the working families. Is that right? I don't think it's right.
No, what I'm saying is, what would be the purpose of a moratorium on LERTAs if they don't need a LERTA and they're going to build it anyway?
Just to clarify, too.
Well, put your, put your mic on. No, put your mic on.
We're not giving LERTA to corporations, we're giving to the, the people, the developers. Just look clear.
Right. Right. I was just saying, turn your mic on, that's all.
Aren't the developers, the driving force behind the, without the developer, nothing happens?
And they build these things, you know, about 10 to 14 years.
A lot of times, a lot of times they're spec, they're spec, yeah. Yeah. Which makes it even worse. To give, to give a LERTA on a, on a business you don't even know makes it even worse. But that's my opinion.
Okay. Any other council members have any?
Well, the last thing I'd like to say, Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd like to see this on the next agenda, and we can certainly carry this on at that point. But every day that goes by, we're going to see more unchecked development that happens. And I think we really need to put our heads together to see, to determine what kind of Luzerne County we want to see in 20, 30 years. I mean, I listened to, when Mr. Augustine came to visit, I listened to the tapes. He made me disappear for the meeting, but I, I still listened. And it's, the plan is to turn this into an industrial zone. It's, it's a, it, I hate to use the word assault, but I just threw it out there. It's, it's an assault on the quality of life here, especially for people in South County. And Mr. Zola's on the front lines. So again, what kind of development do we want to have? I would like to see planned development. I don't want to just see a, a billion structures popping up on either side of the highway, clogging up our highways there, adding to, to the, the costs of running our governments and getting away with tax abamens for 10 years. You know, it's not unreasonable. I keep on bringing this up, but it, it seems like we, we don't move this ball. We, we are reactive, we're not proactive. And we've got, we've got designs on our area that we're just unwilling participants. We just give away the tax abatement for 10 years. And I think the schedule, I would like to see that on the agenda. I think we need to move that forward. It's time. And let's take a council vote and move it forward, okay? And if need be, I would suggest the moratorium as well. We've got to see what stick is going to work, what carrot's going to work. I, I don't even mind PP&amp;L. I'm glad they're there. I'm glad we have energy. I like energy. I like my AC, like Mr. LaScavage said. So I'm not about that. But again, I, I just want to be very clear because I think we're, we're talking past each other again. We've got to meet some kind of middle ground that protects people's quality of life, that secures it for our grandkids' future, that preserves Luzerne County, which is a very unique place. And I, I'm, you're probably sick of me telling about this, but I don't want to be the Lehigh Valley. I don't think most of you want to be the Lehigh Valley here.
I think with, going again, I think we have to really worry about the environment because we're, that's one thing that we're really forgetting about. Maybe we could, due diligence, put in when we give out any kind of thing that they have some kind of study that needs to be done. Because just that spraying alone is not only hurting your, your family, but uncountable amounts of animals.
Yes.
You know, and just reckoning that the virgin area that you're talking about is, is almost criminal in its own self. Not even the people there, just the animals that live there. And none of that is even being considered. I mean, there's so many animals that are getting extinct and then we're just sitting there watching and not even caring. I think we should maybe add something to whenever we give out any kind of money. What kind of environmental study did you do to, to help our area instead of just giving money hand and fist? Oh, yeah, I, I don't know. That's, that's just me. It's just.
Yeah. Patty, like what you're talking about, that Job Course site, that, that patch of land, I think we took a good stand about that. We said we value green space there in, in that part of the township, right, Jimmy, your backyard. And I think we like that. A lot of neighbors came out here and they, they communicate that to us. Hey, we like the status quo. We don't want to see 500 housing tracts pop up here. And so I say, put it on the agenda. If any, I'm willing to debate it. I'm willing to hear people out. Change my mind, truly. Change my mind. I'm, I'm happy to do that. But let's debate it and let's take some definitive action because we're wasting time.
Or maybe we could add things to it.
Add or subtract, you know, whatever, whatever the best path is. But again, I'm, I'm not into, I, I, I'm not wasting, I don't want to here to waste somebody's time just to take a, a broad brush and sweep it away or, or allow it in here. Let's really exercise some leadership collectively. Let's do it.
Mr. Haas, are you, are you going to send that to the office of law to have it put on the agenda? Well, I'll put it on the agenda for the next vote.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
I mean, one, one chair, Mr. Chair, it's already existing. We already have the schedule. We never voted on that. That needs to come. That's a component. Would you like me to do it separately? Would you like me to do three separate ones or together? What's your pleasure?
I think it should be separate.
I think it should be separate because these are all different issues. And I'm, I'm not comfortable voting on them as a block. And honestly, I'm not comfortable talking about them altogether because they're getting mixed up and it's confusing people and making them angry at the wrong things.
No, absolutely. And that's why I want to have this definitive discussion. And, and let's talk it out. Again, I think with Mr. Augustine said, I, I heard a lot of good discussion, but it was two camps. It seems like you're in one camp or the other, and there's no middle ground. So let's, let's find the middle ground.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Zola, I mean, I know John a long, long time. And I would sympathize with you. If I was in your shoes, I'd be doing exactly the same thing, doing everything we possibly can. But the bottom line is, and I think Harry, Harry, Harry hit it, how do we stop PP&amp;L? I mean, PP&amp;L could put it in no matter what we do. PP&amp;L could still do what it wants to do. And I don't have an answer to that. I, I wish I did. But I don't know if we could rescind what we did, what we passed already. North Point already has there. We're going to get sued for that. We are going to get sued. I, I don't know what that means. I don't know how much the county gets sued for. We'd have to have that discussion. We, we have to really look into that. But again, is how do we stop PP&amp;L from doing exactly what they want to do and ruining Sugarloaf?
Mr. Riley, do you have a remark you'd like to make?
Question on the status of this right of way. If you expand the right of way for a public utility and are going to use the powers of eminent domain, you have to get a certificate of public convenience of the public utility commission, which holds a hearing and allows, you know, a evidence of alternative routes and evidence of need and notification of proper records and hearings. Has that all been completed?
Not yet.
They haven't filed.
Yeah.
So, so that is a critical element for those who are, have concerns about a route to martial expertise and both, both engineering, environmental and legal expertise on the, on the issue, especially if, as Mr. Zola said, they're all, they're all, are viable alternative routes. So, so that's sort of like if, if the issue is, is there's a, there's future power needs, whether they're a lot higher because of data centers, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of existing businesses in, in that area that have nothing to do with data. And some have big power needs because they have a filing plan or something. And some of them have low power needs because they're a warehouse. But there are power needs, some of which, you know, you know, data centers are, are orders of magnitude higher than traditional. But there's this process of improving that, that, that the public right to have this route is more important than the right of the property or to enjoy the property, what that you described.
Right. I, I could, I could speak to that for a second. I did speak to a member of the, of the PUC, and they told me that that would be the, the next logical step for the, for the residents and for any other interested party is to just keep an eye out for when that process begins. Mr. Zola, you said that, that paperwork hasn't been filed yet, I guess, through the, through PPL?
Okay, so we're getting a little off track here. So we're fully aware of, of the PUC, okay? PPL has not filed with the PUC yet. Our chances at PUC are like this. Very small. Very, very small. And it's going to cost a whole bunch of money. Money that people don't have when you're going against a company like Pennsylvania Power and Light, okay? So what we're asking is for our elected officials, our elected officials to support us and help us in our cause. Because what we're trying to do is resolve this amicably with PPL. If, if you guys help us and we get some other people to help us, it is going to bring all of the powers-to-be to the table. And they're going to have discussion and try to resolve this so that PPL could file the alternative at the PUC as opposed to the preferred. That is our whole goal. So I mean, that, that is pretty much it. I mean, I, you know, what he said is true. Not saying anything he didn't say was true. We know all of this. But the bottom line is, that is not where we want this to go, and we need our elected officials to help us.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Zola. Council members, anything else?
Thank you.
The only thing I'm going to say, Mr. Chair, I'm going to, I'm going to submit that to the office of law. But if, if I could see any precedence we have, we, we can see in case law about entities who tried to take back a LERTA. If we could see that, Attorney Skeen, that would be helpful. And what was the other component I was thinking of? I would like to see it. I would like to see, did they prevail? Did they not prevail? What were the nuances of that? If we could do that, because I think that will help us examine our options, even though I know, Ms. Prince Smith, you did some research and it was hard, hard for us to find something. And then, what's the other component? And I guess I'll circle back on that one, what the other one is, but in the interest of time.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zola.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Appreciate it very much.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, wait, hold on a second. Is there public comment? Work session. Hold on. Anybody? Anybody on the Zoom? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.